Folks, we're going to get underway. Good morning. It's nine o'clock or nine thirty, so we are going to get underway. This is Committee of the Whole for Tuesday, January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four. My name is Councillor John French, and I'm chairing the meeting today as the Acting Mayor for the month of January. So item number one on our agenda is a welcome to the Squamish Nation Traditional Territory. Please be advised that this council meeting is being livestreamed, recorded, and will be available to the public to view on the District of Squamish website following the meeting. If you've got any concerns, please notify the corporate officer present at the meeting, Ms. Robin Arthurs. Item number two is the adoption of the agenda, and the staff recommendation is that council adopt the January twenty-twenty, January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four Committee of the Whole. It's moved by Mayor Hurford, seconded by Councillor Peddingill. Call the question, all those in favor? Motion carries unanimous. And item three is a delegation. And this morning, we are going to get the annual update from the Squamish Helping Hands Society. I'll turn it over to you to introduce yourselves and start your presentation.
Thank you. My name is Lori Pine. I'm the new Executive Director at Squamish Helping Hands. I've been in the position for about eight months. I just prepared a very quick presentation today for you because I expected to answer several questions. And so we've recently updated our strategic plan, so that's what I wanted to share with you today. I also want to share that I'm originally from Enniskinabee Territory, otherwise known as Ontario. That's where I first learned about family and nature and accountability, and I'm glad to be sharing that with you today on the Squamish Nation. This is my friend and colleague, John Thanhand. He works with me and our team, and then a lot of our people with lived experience. So he's just going to speak to that programming just a little bit at the end of the presentation and be here to bolster the question. So, um, what do I do here? There we go. So we've changed our, we've updated our vision. It's more holistic. It's a safe and healthy community for all. We're moving away from homelessness and hunger, really stigmatic language. That that's something that I can put on the wall and share with everyone, and I'm really proud of where this has ended up. Our mission at Squamish Helping Hands is dedicated to supporting people in our community through our work to inspire hope and independence, utilizing a harm reduction approach. We do this through our programs and services of culturally aligned care in the areas of health and wellbeing, shelter and transitional housing, food security, and community outreach. As an inclusive organization, we welcome everyone with respect and dignity, aiming to build capacity and empower individuals. So just, I'm going to move very quickly through our strategic priorities. Some of them are internal and some of them are external. I'll try and speak mostly to the external ones. But our first one is people and organization. So we're really looking like the rest of the nation to retain and recruit people, really working and leaning into our values to prevent burnout. And we're implementing a very robust training and development program for the team, succession and places to move within the society. We have a new Board of Directors. We have a new membership this year. We're really looking at our governance. We're looking at our IT and data review, really concentrating on a safe working environment. We've recently done a violence risk assessment. And important for everyone in this room to know that the most violent, most risk of violence at Squamish Helping Hands is verbal escalation. And it's usually between the peers, between the participants, more so than the participants and the staff. So I just want to get that out there to you guys. And the next thing, of course, we're working on a reconciliation action plan. I'm really excited to be getting an elder in weekly to just make space and share and learn with the participants that are there. That's a picture of our team. That's Tom. How long was Tom here for? Like ten or eleven years, right? And that's Shauna, just speaking to belonging and teamwork. Next one is our programs and services. We're doing evaluation of work of the society, so we're really looking at our food programs. They've been zero barrier in the last several years. And we're finding now with, obviously with food costs, that we're going to have to add some kind of intake or low barrier solution because we are serving vulnerable people, but also visitors, and we're trying to figure out how to navigate that a little bit better. We've got our housing programs, something I'd like to mention, Under One Roof. We have a harm reduction approach there, but we are also serving individuals that are on the recovery journey. And it's very difficult to serve both those people in both those places. I, we might look towards something in the future like having a sober shelter, perhaps, and a harm reduction shelter. Our health and wellness program, we have challenges at our open door health, keeping doctors there. Medical office assistance has been difficult to retain, but we've served hundreds of people there this year. It's pretty amazing. Again, defining the transition plan for the participants, where are they going to transition to? And diversifying the programming offered to the participants to really help them build capacity and agency to move forward. That's where Johnny comes in. We're working on our communication plan, updating our website. This is one of our programs that Johnny Huff leads, Street Reach. These are volunteers that do night walks in the community and meet people where they're at. They often have snacks, survival supplies, and good conversation. The next strategic priority is partnerships and funding, and this is how we all work alongside each other. We're looking at financial assessment and planning, infrastructure planning. To confirm our organizational needs, you'll see in that homelessness report this year that seniors have gone up a lot, and they're falling into the shelter system, so we're looking at how we can better serve seniors. First Nations individuals was also up, but I'm excited about the work of the Haim Housing Society to help these individuals align with their culture. Integrating the Food Bank, right now, the Food Bank is a standalone society. We were looking at how to better serve the community. We're also seeing that seniors are in need of food accessibility and families. And there's some stigma about coming to our building, and so we're seeing how perhaps we can come up with some satellite food banks to better serve those individuals. And the last thing is, I'm sure a hot topic is the Overdose Prevention Site, speaking to a contingency plan for its relocation. I love this photo here. This is an International Overdose Prevention Day. What I really like about it is we've got staff in that photo. We've got people with lived experience in that photo. We've got paramedics, emergency team there. Mayor Hurford was, I think, also there that day, but a really nice collaboration of the community coming together to acknowledge lives lost. And the last thing I just want to speak to is we're doing a Coldest Night of the Year event, hoping it's going to be a legacy event for Squamish Helping Hands moving forward, but it's a walk through the downtown at night to bring mindfulness to what it's like to be outside at this time of year. And then we're going to serve a simple meal after, which is something like you'd receive at Squamish Helping Hands if you were in need of food security. So I wanted to give that a little plug, but I promised I wouldn't solicit it, so I won't. I, just before I hand it over to Johnny very quickly, Johnny, I'd like to share your poem.
Sure.
I think it's a great introduction to you. Well, it's not your poem, but you're in it. This is an amazing testimonial and of how our programs really help the community, and this is a person living outside. Finally, a group of humans that don't just pretend to care, real good-hearted souls, always willing to help and share. They always find the time to listen to anything we have to say, and when they walk the streets, it always feels like a special day. Street Reach is what they choose as their name, to treat us all no matter what, the same. As they walk through the forests in search of anyone they find, I know without a doubt they are heaven-sent, simply one of a kind. With Johnny as their mentor, leader, motivator, and friend, they always display real care and never just pretend. Always a smile on their face, ready to help anyone in need, quench our thirst, feel our pain, always ready for another good deed. As they all listen attentively to whatever they hear, they know God is right beside them, and they never ever fear. They never judge us nor complain, no matter who or what we are, and even when we don't see them, we feel they are never far. I just, I love this, and it speaks to all the work we do, and I'm really proud of Johnny. Thanks for what you do for the community. Johnny, do you want to speak too?
Yeah, I mean.
The work we do?
Yeah, a little bit. I think, yeah, great presentation. Thank you for, for having us. I think I was just wanting to, yeah, really uplift the community of people that, that we serve, I think, because a lot of them, just like everyone else here, like love living here, and they think it's a beautiful place and an amazing place, and they're part of the community, you know, and I, yeah, some of my, some of the ways I felt most, you know, accepted in the community has been through my job and through the people that I work with and stuff, oddly enough. So, yeah, just a really amazing group of people, so I just want to kind of uplift them. And then I think as it relates to being in front of you today and some of the work that we do to support people, especially when it comes to the overdose crisis, which is, you know, right on our doorstep. It's right, right here in the community, in the Sea de Sky, leading cause of death for, for ages, I believe, ten to fifty-nine in, in the province. So it's, it's something that's a real emergency. It's been called that for, for seven years. And I think the service providers, the people who are living through it, their friends, the people, you know, that we've lost. It's, people are really trying to, to work on it with collective, with a sort of collective approach. And I think what I'm learning is just how valuable it can be to have the support of elected leadership in not only, you know, celebrating and uplifting projects, but also participating and, and looking for opportunities to be there as leaders in the community and connecting the dots and really making sure that the everyone, the work that everyone's doing is, yeah, can, can be more than collaborative, that collective impact. There's, you know, there's models and stuff that, that we look at to learn about it. But I think that's sort of what I wanted to just put across was, you know, an invitation or a, whatever it can be to, to further the involvement of our elected leadership in the community as well, you know, as the First Nations leaders. And I think for the whole Sea de Sky, I know later this week, there's a local Leadership United Conference, which I think is a really good start to this whole package, so I really hope to see some of you there later this week. And I think it just ties back into everything that society is doing, what's happening right here in Squamish. And I just really look forward to more opportunities to work with you and have these interventions and services that we have, like the Overdose Prevention Site, really put front and center in our, in our community, you know? Like, I think if this is a real, it is a real emergency, people are really dying, we have these services here. You know, on the district's website, I'd love to see that. It's like, hey, we, we, we are working on this. We are working alongside our health, our health sector. We're a community that is addressing this as a real health emergency and not just seeing it as sort of something that social services can deal with over time, and they're doing their best, and we really support them, but as something that's, you know, really taken on board. So that's all I wanted to get across. I'm really grateful to be here. I know a lot of you are really involved and are really passionate, and I think we could do more to open up the doors around how do we actually work more together. So thanks for listening and thank you for inviting me. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, everybody. That is the end of our presentation. I did include some amazing statistics in the package that I sent, but it's something we're going to work on in the future, is telling the good story and not just the bad stories sometimes. But just know that we made twenty-five thousand sandwiches for the schools last year. It's a huge piece, actually, that people don't understand. It happens at, at Under One Roof. We also do Meals on Wheels for seniors. And so we are, we are ticking a lot of the boxes for social needs for our community. And I, as reiterated by our new Board Chair, who is Greg Tuuk, I think some of you will remember him from your strategic planning. He's the new Board Chair, and he says Squamish is in the perfect position to be able to solve these problems. We're not too big and we're not too small, and I actually really agree. Yeah. So any questions or anything else to add?
I'm sure there are many questions.
Okay.
Thanks for the presentation and thanks for keeping it brief so that we can bombard you with questions. We're scheduled through until ten-thirty, so we've got forty-five minutes. And Councillor Greenlaw is going to start us off.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, I just want to, Johnny has a peer advocacy group this morning, so he, in which takes place at the Overdose Prevention Site, so he's got to leave in a couple.
But it's right next door.
Thanks. Through the Chair, first off, I just want to say thank you for everything you do for some of the most vulnerable people in our community. I spend time there almost weekly, and I am always inspired by the compassion, empathy, and joy that the people in there, both staff and residents, really bring to the space. And I especially appreciate your focus on reducing stigma, the emphasis on empowering instead of shame. I have loved ones who struggle with addiction, and I deeply appreciate what you're doing for these people that so many people turn away from. So often, people believe that if you shame someone enough, they'll kind of straighten up and fly straight. But I tend to agree with the idea that the opposite of addiction, of addiction is connection, and that these people are in need of love and acceptance. And I really believe that that's what your facility provides. That's what I see every time I walk in there, and it's really inspirational. So thank you from the bottom of my heart. It is such important work, and I know it's difficult. I hope you're all taking care of yourselves and taking care of each other as well. And I do actually have questions too. I was wondering, as you're probably aware, we have a lot of conversations about circular economy. And I noticed in your report that you talk about rescuing food, and I was wondering what resources you, you are using to seek out rescued food.
Sure. So we have partnerships with five of the supermarkets in town. We have a paid driver position, and then it's bolstered with volunteer positions. And they pick up every day from each location. Walmart is one of them also. And I know, very, sorry, heavy volunteer-driven program.
I noticed that there's a disproportionate representation of men seeking your resources versus women. And I was wondering if you could comment, comment on that, whether it's a representative, representative of fewer women needing these resources, or are they perhaps accessing it through Pearl Space?
I wouldn't say they're accessing through Pearl Space. It's pretty specific there, that you're fleeing domestic violence there. Typically, in social service, we do serve more men. Do you have anything you want to add to that? Like, I can't see.
I think only that I actually don't know for sure that we do or don't serve more men than women. Like, I know we have slightly more men's shelter beds, I think, you know, looking around, I think it seems like more, more men and stuff. But I think sometimes it's, it's quantity and quality too, in a sense. You know, some, some women who are vulnerable and accessing services, their, their needs can be a lot different. And sometimes maybe how they're navigating their life is different too, so they may not always access services at a place like, like that because of, yeah, other types of things that, that young women can be exposed to or, or taken into or whatever. So I think, I think, I don't really know how to fully, really understand our dynamic in Squamish compared to other places necessarily, but I'm not sure that, yeah, I'm just not sure.
And then I just have one other question for right now, just a point of clarification. The report mentions that the Overdose Prevention Site hours have increased from X to X, and I was just wondering. No, that's fine. I was just wondering what they were.
They, we open at twelve, and it's open until ten at night, and that is extended. It used to be, it started at five hours. Thanks for catching that.
Oh, yeah, thanks. That's all I have for now. Thanks.
Next, Mayor Hurford. Ms. Pine, I wonder if you might just tip that microphone down a little bit. It'll pick you up better and move it more directional towards you. Yeah, yeah, perfect. Mayor Hurford.
Thank you so much for everything you do and the, the great presentation. I did have questions around the, around the hours at the overdose prevention, the, the increase in use, that the graph that goes with that statistic is quite, quite telling, and I wondered how, is there more, is there more to go? Like, what's the, what is the appropriate way to, the best way to deliver those services, you think, going, going forward? Is it a continuation? Is it, those are the operating hours, and we sort of adjust? Is it increasing those hours? Is it additional facilities in future in different areas of the community? Like, what do you see as, as the, the best way to serve the community in that particular space?
Well, the best person to ask that question to are the people that use it. However, from what I see, I think a twenty-four-hour-a-day OPS would be very advantageous for our community for certain. We do see an uptick at Under One Roof of activity when the OPS is closed. Just so everyone knows here, we get about ninety visits a day there right now. That is not unique individuals, but that is ninety visits, so it's been quite busy there. Typically, in a month, we see ten overdoses, typically. And then with other incidents on top, critical incidents, we call them, for, that require fire or police, usually a medical incident, we're looking at about thirty of those, so like one a day. So that directly impacts sort of the day-to-day and strategic work that we try and do when these events are typically happening. But as far as the overdose prevention site, I do know that one of the peers told me once that the, the ambulance team like having the overdose prevention site because all the emergencies are in one place, and they only have to service one place rather than going all over. And so I think that speaks to the response time as well. And they come whenever they're asked. They're pretty amazing. Do you want to add anything to that?
Just that the, the scope of the overdose prevention site, I think, is really important too, because it's, it's a warming center. It's a place for food. It's a place to socialize. It's a place where, when, sometimes when you're restricted access to other places, it's somewhere where you can go. So, and we, we do a lot of programming there. It's where we can find people and connect with them. And so I think that the overdose prevention site really, it, you know, it saves lives. And then it also creates this amazing space that's like really, really useful. So I think people have said, you know, if it was open twenty-four hours, it would be used twenty-four hours.
Thank you for that. In your presentation, you mentioned the sort of that future state of potentially a sober versus recovering facilities, which makes me think about sort of what's, what's next, what's on the, on the horizon? And where are you at in that concept? Is it just the concept and, and, or how do you see executing that? Or what needs to be done to, to realize that or something similar going forward?
So the previous Executive Director had this amazing vision to get all the social services in one spot. What we're seeing now, when it's actually operational, is it's tricky to serve all those people in one spot. That's kind of where we are, Mayor. We don't have another location secured as of yet. We don't know what that looks like. Thanks, Johnny. I think that would be for low-income seniors, I feel, is a real need. And although we're not a recovery facility, the people, when they come out of recovery, are the most vulnerable to relapse, and they're having to stay at the shelter because there's nowhere else. And so most people are homeless when they leave recovery.
Okay. Thank you. Lots of, lots of work, work ahead. I appreciate the, all the bits of context. It's extremely helpful.
Recognizing it is the first piece, right? And so we've all done that now, and, and, yeah, to move forward from there.
Okay. Thank you.
Next, I have Councillor Stoner, followed by Councillor Hamilton.
Thank you, Through the Chair. Thanks for being here today and for all the work that you do. Can you just remind me, does the OPS allow for inhalation or is it just injection? Inhalation and injection?
Can we have your microphone on?
Sorry.
Sorry, didn't quite catch it.
Thanks, Bill. It has inhalation at the current overdose prevention site.
That's great. Thanks. And then I'm wondering if you can speak a little bit to if you've seen any impacts from the fall provincial legislative changes that limited the allowable public use of drugs as part of the decrim process? Has that had any impact, do you think, on folks in our community? Or is that just kind of something that has happened and hasn't really had much impact on the ground?
I haven't seen much impact from it.
That's great. And then my other question was billing on Mayor Hurford's point, both around the, starting to think about like different shelter spaces. I think we've heard and from you and from others that it can be difficult to service all populations within one building. And then also in your presentation, the, starting to think around transitional outside of the fourth floor and how we move people along that spectrum of housing. And I'm just curious, who needs to be at the table for those conversations? Who do we bring together to start to piece that together for our community?
So, great question. I appreciate that. The average rent in our building is six hundred and fifty dollars. So transition to transition out of there, if you're on long-term disability or pension, it's like virtually impossible. BC Housing doesn't encourage us to raise the rent, so there's really no incentive. I don't know who needs to be at the table there. I don't. I think it's certainly a provincial issue. The funding is challenging, Councillor Stoner, because the complexity of what comes with homelessness is often riddled with substance use and mental health, and BC Housing doesn't support the support that comes along with that. So it's tricky.
Yeah, fair enough. I know the, bringing the right people to the table to get both the support services as well as the home is probably one of the most challenging pieces that we're seeing, both in our community and across the province. So I don't think we're the only ones that are struggling with this, but would love to kind of put our brains together and figure out who we pull in to try and have those conversations and. those conversations and figure out what potentially made in Squamish solution might look like. I guess my other question on that is with the fact that folks are kind of, as you said, like, not able to transition out of the fourth floor, is that having downwards impact on availability of folks? Like, are you at capacity basically? Like, or do you still have space?
Great question. So we are fully at capacity. Uh, unfortunately, um, the, we have a vulnerability um, assessment that we do for folks. We've got about 23 people on the list right now. Fortunately, people don't cycle in unless someone passes away. So um, you know, it's really interesting for our Board of Directors, it's something I'm reporting on, is that how many people are we housing every month? Well, like, none. Like, it's sort of static at. So there's 40 beds where residents live and then we've got 24 shelter beds. In December, we turned away uh, about 12 people in December.
Thanks, Counselor Stoner. Uh, next I have Counselor Hamilton, followed by Counselor Penningbill.
Thanks very much. And thanks very much for absolutely all the work you do for this uh, the, for our community. Counselor Stoner touched on, one of the things that I'm really interested in is this transition. I see this as a, in order to have um, a facility that is, that, that really is, is bringing folks back into independence. We need that transition. And I'm not sure that you have, I'm not sure that there is an answer to this question. I think Counselor Stoner asked the, the pre-question, which is good, which is who should be at the table? And I think maybe I'm asking a question that's too far down the road. But do you see any uh, so potential solutions? Do you see any ways that we could produce, we could help to create that transition space?
I think if we were to have another building, that it would be for um, the people that are on the fourth floor and moving out, so they could transition to that building. Then there could be upward momentum within that building. However, that building would become more complex because more complex, you know, as um, sober and self-actuating people move out, more complex needs move in. And so it might change the sort of activity at that building. So that's something to consider as well. Sometimes we don't even take in the most vulnerable, vulnerable of vulnerabilities, because we already have so many of those that we need someone that is a little more high functioning in order that we can care for them uh, and meet their needs. So it, it is a bit of a, a balancing act and there is a lot of, um, we don't take it lightly when we house people. There's a lot of decision-making that goes into it for certain and a big team.
Thanks. So what I've taken away from that is that if we were to um, expand the facilities of Under One Roof, it would be better to produce sort of a um, a different facility further down the line than reproducing more of the same type of facility. Is that?
That's what I feel and that's what the Board of Directors is really digging into in our strategic plan, is defining this transitional plan, like what does it look like? And that's why we're really trying to do with people like Johnny, diversifying the programming in order to give agency and really build these folks with um, lived experience and, and you know, like, for instance, they're doing a cleanup on Sundays now. Well, those individuals have to show up at a certain time. They've got to wear a high-vis vest. They've got to actually, interesting cleanup garbage that their um, peers have left that they don't want to do because they're like, why are they so messy? You know? But that is always building agency, right? And having, having, having to wait, having to be somewhere. You know, we have people show up without identification and, and just helping them get a bank account, like these things, right? So um, we're really looking at expanding that programming to build agency and, and really, what does that transition mean? Yeah.
Thanks. And I think your, your response there leads into my second question, which is that um, the interaction of um, the facilities within our broader community in the downtown. There's friction, right? Between residents, nearby residents. And I, I'm sure there are solutions. All the solutions will come with uh, with, with, with pros and cons. But I see this, the street reach as a potential space that can both look towards the folks um, that are outside of Under One Roof and, and on the street and in the community. And also connect with, attempt to connect with the residents and the folks who are feeling friction due to the existence of Under One Roof. Is there any capacity to increase street reach or to create programs that attempt to bridge that friction? Or reduce the friction with community?
It's a great um, strategy and I aspire to build street reach even further. Street reach was born out of a UBCM grant, which is now finished. So we've tried to envelope that into our regular programming. But it's building capacity for that. I would really say um, that the community doesn't know what the community doesn't know. And it's usually um, fear-based because of what someone doesn't know. And I think that's really important advocacy piece and a really important engagement piece that we need to, to my point earlier of tell the story and tell the good stories as well as, you know, the five tents that are out back. Yeah.
Counselor Penningill?
Yeah, thanks. Just add my thanks to everything Helping Hands does in the community. And I'm also curious, what is the current state in terms of availability of um, funding and support from the province for detox and more ongoing treatment for addictions and so on? For people who are interested in making a shift?
We don't deal with recovery as much. There is another society in town turning point that does recovery. We support people in their recovery, but we don't have recovery programs at Squamish Helping Hands. So I can't really speak to the funding model there. That's, I'll leave it there.
And I guess, I guess where I'm getting, and maybe this still is, is maybe for Turning Point, but I, for the folks, I would assume intuitively that people who are going into the overdose prevention site are more likely to be interested in, in some sort of uh, addictions treatment. Is there an option for them or are many of them, there just isn't a choice? And they've got to kind of figure it out on their own? Or do you have a sense of, of where the sort of availability of someone who wants? Is, is there something there for them?
Sure. So we work closely with um, Vancouver Coastal Health and they have outreach workers that attend our OPS regularly. And they are the ones that have these programs. So they're certainly available. It's really interesting though, uh, yeah, people that use the overdose prevention site, like they really don't want to die. They really don't. And um, we had, uh, it was funny, not funny. We didn't have the sidewalk cleared in time. And some of the users were like, hey, you gotta clear the sidewalk. I'm gonna slip and fall. And it's like, but you were just at the overdose prevention site. But they, they, the correlation, like addiction, they just can't, you know, make that correlation. So um, the, the programs are there. We really try and take the harm reduction approach and just support them in the journey that they're on, on that day. They are available, but I would say few and far between. And the point of when they go to recovery for three months and then they leave and there's nowhere to go after that.
Okay, thank you. And I'll just sort of add a comment. I would be interested, because we talk about the overdose prevention site and location that occasionally, but I don't have a great sense of what makes for a successful overdose prevention site. So that's a topic that I would be interested in, in knowing more about.
So a really great opportunity would be to attend the peer advocacy group that's happening on Tuesday mornings at 10, just behind here, because it's um, they talk about what they want for their next overdose prevention site and why this overdose prevention site is so important to them. But to Johnny's point earlier, it's uh, it provides uh, basic needs to people, like in his two-hour advocacy group, they're gonna get warmth, they're gonna have belonging, they're gonna get food, and then they're gonna be back on the street. As Johnny always says, being homeless is a full-time job. So the overdose prevention site really is sort of this hub of, of safety, actually. Yeah.
That's everything, Counselor Penningill. Thank you. I have a few questions of my own and then uh, we'll go back around to Counselor Greenlaw. You mentioned in the presentation uh, that there's work underway to relocate the overdose prevention operation. And you've uh, sort of touched on it a little bit, some of the individual questions. I'm wondering, is there anything more you can tell us about that, that you haven't already shared? And, and I'll just throw in as well that there are definitely some neighbors here who are very interested in any additional information you could share as, as they have um, patiently lived with uh, the reality that the OPS brings.
So I'll tell you everything I know. So the district owns the land. Vancouver Coastal Health funds the, the overdose prevention site. It's their mandate. It's their strategic plan. Overdose prevention sites, not Squamish Helping Hands. Squamish Helping Hands operates it. So we have uh, no, it's up to Vancouver Coastal Health to find a new location for it. It's not up to Squamish Helping Hands. And to be very clear, it would be difficult for Squamish Helping Hands to operate it if it was not kitty corner to where it was, because people get breaks. We've got our um, you know, our, our risk management program is around being so closely um, situated. And so um, it would be difficult for us to operate if it goes somewhere else. But that's part of the um, discussion, I think. I, I was told that it needed to be relocated as soon as April, but I think Vancouver Coastal Health has really pushed back, recognizing the, it's more than just a safe injection site, that it is a sort of safety hub. Yes, I want to speak a little bit to the, to the neighbors. Because it's also what happens in and around the outside of the OPS, right? And it's gathering outside when the OPS is closed, because there's nowhere for them to go. And that's when a lot of the critical incidents happen. We had a death there uh, when it was closed. And that's when the garbage tends to um, build up. Yeah.
Great, thank you. Um, and I'm also interested um, in learning anything you can share about the role that your society plays in um, managing, dealing with, interacting with uh, the cluster of campers that you mentioned uh, earlier that are in behind your building.
Sure. So um, it's important for everyone here to know that those individuals uh, living there are very complex. They can't be inside because of their substance use or mental health. Someone back there has a dog. We can have dogs inside, but they need to be muzzled and this person refuses, for instance. Most people that are out there either can't be inside because they're so complex or don't want to follow the rules that we need to follow to keep the staff and community safe. We haven't been full all winter, so these people chose to stay out there uh, in minus 25. It was really important. I have fielded a lot of calls with the public and, and when they find out that they actually can come inside and that we're not full and overflowing, they're, they're pretty shocked by that. We've been doing a cleanup every week. Uh, uses a lot of resources. We found out that these tents are strategically placed on four different titles. So it's not just on the Under One Roof title. They don't know they're on four titles, but it's, it's um, complex because that means four people have to agree to move them. We're working with BC Housing uh, on the encampment. Their encampment funds are depleted for the year. They have three more months to go and they have no money left to help deal with encampments. Currently, we are doing what we call managing the encampment. So it's keeping it clean and we've offered support, shelter and food to those individuals. And that, according to BC Housing, is what we can do and we're doing it. So that's what, that's what we're doing, Counselor French. Um, is there, is there other questions I can answer about the encampment?
No, I don't have any. Um, and because my first two questions were, were tough, I, I want to end on an easier one. During your presentation, you mentioned coldest night of the year left us hanging. How would if you share the relevant details, the wins, the wears of that event?
So the coldest night of the year, we're doing a, a 5K walk downtown. There's a quicker 2K loop. We're gonna be going by all the amazing community resources that we have. So we're gonna go buy um, Pearl Space. We're gonna go buy Sea to Sky. We're gonna go buy VCH. We're gonna go buy the OPS. We're gonna, so, so the walkers kind of get, get a gist of all the amazing resources we have uh, in our downtown hub. And then um, it's just to bring awareness to homelessness. Uh, it's done in teams. So uh, there's team captains. And then I'm not sure how many on a team. I think it's eight on a team. And it's, it's peer fundraising. Uh, I think we've raised over $5,000 already. We, we got a lofty goal of $50,000. But um, you know, Comox raised $300,000 last year. So I think when I say a legacy project, I would love to see this build and build into something that, um, you know, I'd love to see more buy-in with the schools because of the school lunch program. I'd love to see more buy-in with um, Vancouver Coastal Health because of all the um, mental health programs. So there's lots of partnerships in town, but I, it's gonna take a while to build it, build it and they will come.
And that's
The date is February 24th and it starts at 5 o'clock and it's gonna start at OCM Park.
Great. Uh, I have it in my calendar. I
Thank you. That's great. Thank you.
Counselor Greenlaw?
Yeah, thanks. I took the opposite approach. I gave my easy questions first. So I'm gonna ask again about the encampments behind there and I understand, I appreciate your uh, response just now. So I understand that you're doing what you can to address the, the tents in the, in the backyard there. But um, obviously you are better versed in this than anybody else in this room. And I was wondering what you would see possibly as an ideal solution for them? Because I mean, like, I get that they don't want to come inside there, but they can't really stay in a riparian area that's a bear corridor and like kind of harassing neighbors either, right? Because it's in everybody's best interest to keep this as, to keep your establishment as well, wonderful as possible, shall we say? So yeah, I was just, um, obviously those people are there because we have all the resources, right? We've got showers. We've got garbage. We've got food. We've got shelter. That's why they are in close proximity. You know, when you evict people, you just evict them to somewhere else. They gotta go somewhere. As far as solutions, um, the CBC did a really uh, great. On the current one morning, they did about a half an hour, 20 minute, um, someone that was for encampment, someone that was neutral and someone that was against. And when you finish listening to that, you don't know whose side you're on. And I'm telling you, it's really complex. And so um, a, a solution. I'm feeling now that uh, like a hygiene station would be best, that does have garbage, washrooms and a place to be safe. That would need to be operated however, because there would still be substance use at those locations. There's human trafficking, uh, there's substance use, there's biohazard, there's all kinds of things that come with encampments. And so to say I'm, I'm for them or against them is really tricky. Don't make me do it. Oh, no, I'm not, I'm not asking you to say whether you're for them or against them. I'm just wondering what these people need to be more, you know, cohesive with our community. I know some other communities have looked at uh, converting containers to individual housing areas, because I understand these people, they can't, they don't want to live in direct community all the time and, and they may, maybe they need their own spaces. I mean, obviously I don't know all the complexities around it, but some areas are looking at situations where, like a container where there's three units in it and you have a spot to put your stuff. It's safe. You, you're contained, you're supported, but you're not, you know, in an, in a sort of like looking for, not inconvenient, but in a sort of like looking for not inconvenient, but in appropriate place, you know?
It's again, the support that comes with this, right? Like you can't just, the housing first thing doesn't work. If you're putting someone in there with an intellect of an eight-year-old that is addicted to meth and living on their own, like they just don't have the skills to do that. And we're, that's what we're finding in our facility and, and, you know, we've got people that are coming from the restaurant industry and they're making $22 an hour and they're supporting these individuals. Like it's, it's just so complex. Like there needs to be care along with it. There needs to be support along with it. It can't just be like a parking lot with showers in it, like. So I'm not, I'm not sure what that looks like, but you know, we house 60 people over there and 60 people work there.
Yeah, I guess I'm just asking you to come up with like, yeah, super idealistic, pipe dreamy solutions so that we can move in a direction, you know?
Directly correlates with the eviction from Walmart when that all started.
Mayor Hurford followed by Councilor Stoner, followed by Councilor Peddingle. And it's with 10 minutes left for this segment, so velocity might be appreciated as the clock ticks.
Thank you. And I think your, your answer to that last question leads nicely into this, my question, which is, I know the area of that you, you operate in is fairly clearly defined, but you're also dealing with, for better, for worse, sort of upstream issues that result, that sort of land into your, into your space. And I wonder if you could speak to some, some of that and where, where, whether it's ourselves or other community groups can, can work on those upstream, those upstream pieces. So, you know, to kind of do our best to ensure that that as few people as possible need to, to benefit from the wonderful services that you, that you have. And are you, what are you seeing there? We did, you touched a little bit on the, you know, the, the Walmart, the Walmart piece, when, when folks were displaced from being there, they've moved to be elsewhere. And that's one example. Do you, do you have others of? And I mean, I'm also looking for, I'm sure there's victories in that space that we can, we can celebrate as well. So what do you have to say about that, sort of that upstream piece and where we can be, be, be looking sort of proactively rather?
I think Johnny spoke to it a little bit as like us all sitting at the table together and we're going at it together, not just Squamish Helping Hands is working on it because it really does create that us and them. And we're trying to like eliminate that. And I, I do feel sometimes that Squamish Helping Hands is doing a lot of heavy lifting in this town, a lot of like, food security is one thing on its own self. Health and wellness is its own thing. And then we're doing, throw housing in there too. And it's, it's, it's a lot. It's really a lot. I think the collective impact and the district really knowing what harm reduction is and participating in the solution is, is, is key. I really do. Yeah.
Thank you for that.
Councilor Stoner.
Yeah, thanks. Two more quick questions. You mentioned that currently the food program is a no barrier program and that is looking like it might have to shift. I'm just wondering if you can expand on that a little bit. The challenges in the timeline.
Yeah, sure. So we're looking for the summer. Summer is when we see a real big uptick of, of transient folks coming to town. We have a rock climbing culture here that we're seeing more and more use of our food programs. We have been looking at the city of Vancouver. They actually have food security programs within the city, like at recreation centers and stuff, and they're doing an intake process. And so we're looking into some of those intake processes, not disclosing how much money you make, but putting a little bit of a barrier, a little bit of accountability when people are, are showing up. So BC Housing pays for the kitchen, but doesn't pay for the food. And so as everyone knows, it's become exponential. And so we, we are going to have to look at ways to, to make it low barrier rather than zero barrier. So we're looking for the summer and we're looking at some kind of intake program and not, not cutting back on what we're doing at all, but just a little piece of accountability, I think.
That's really helpful and thanks for that context. My other question is particularly later on this agenda, we are looking at resolutions to bring forward to Lower Mainland Local Government Association and then further on to UBCM, which is kind of one of our core advocacy directions. As you mentioned, a lot of this is funded by, supported by the province. Not to put you directly on the spot, you can think about it and come back to us, but are the, do you have any? So for example, there's the funding for Street Reach is coming to an end, which was provincially supported through UBCM. Are there some key things that we might be able to bring forward and advocate for that would make your job easier if the province were to show up in a different way?
I think it would be supports. And working, it, it seems to be quite siloed how we're all working, like with VCH, et cetera. And, and we're not privy to what their strategic priorities are and but yeah, I think it would be support. I think it would be staff training and development to prevent burnout, as I say, that's really a big piece. We, we have seven people off right now. Because of tragic situations that have happened over there that they've witnessed. And so it's really, the, the people that support need a lot of support and the, the, these things aren't funded. That's what I would look for, for that. There does seem to be a lot of federal funding right now for people with lived experience. And so we are looking to build the, that sort of programming. And if they can support each other, that helps us too, right? And so we're seeing a lot of funding coming forward for people with lived experience.
Councilor Peddingle.
Yeah, just building a little bit on Councilor Stoner's question, I think when we did a tour a while back, saw the, the medical offices or clinics there, which I thought was fantastic. But you mentioned you're having challenges finding doctors and I'm curious if you can expand a bit what the challenge there is. And I have in the back of my mind, VCH is going through a master planning process. And I wonder if there's a piece we can push on there if we understand what some of the obstacles are.
So we have no funding at all from VCH to operate that medical office and that is a mystery to me. I don't know how that happened. So we lack a lot of supports that the doctors need. So it's hard to attract doctors, like when we're in housing and food security, but now we're running a doctor's office, like, and all of a sudden we're ordering medical supplies and doing inventory and like, it's not our, that's not our strategic priority yet. We, we have this amazing facility. It's, it's, it's preventing trips to the ER is what it's doing. And one of the doctors that works for us works in the ER. So I think it, it takes a certain doctor to want to serve vulnerable people as well. But it's keeping the hours regular and when it's hard to get support staff, it's hard to get the doctors. And then if we don't have the doctors, it's hard to get the support staff. It's kind of like a, so, so we really teeter on public health and social service and community service. I really feel like we're fulfilling both, but we aren't supported by public health funding wise.
So that, that's helpful. That's something we can, I think, bring to VCH. And then just a final question, I, I wonder if you have any data or understanding, maybe it's only anecdotal. But, you know, you mentioned there's more seniors seeking services. And I think often people think about addiction leads to homelessness, but I'm wondering how often we're seeing homeless.
That's a great question and I can't answer that. I don't have any metrics to support that. But I'm very curious to know the answer.
Councilor Peddingle, that's everything. Councilor Hamilton, just with a minute left, you were the only one who didn't come back around. So awesome. Ms. Pine, thank you very much. This has been enlightening, helpful. And I, I'm anticipating that when we have our annual report next year, there'll be all kinds of successes to report and new challenges to tackle.
Awesome. Thank you so much. I'm working with Megan to get some district lunch and learns going for naloxone training. So if you do see someone in the park or you do see someone in an alley that is unwell, that you be able to respond. So I highly encourage you, that is something that we're doing for free from funding, from, from various organizations. But we have a trainer and then there'll be a peer with them as well. So to answer questions. Yeah, it's pretty awesome. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. So Councilor Stoner is moving her seat and that's seconded by Mayor Hurford. All those in favor? Motion carries unanimous. And I think we'll take a five-minute recess so that Ms. Morris can set up for our next presentation. So folks, we'll get back. And that is going to take us to item four on our agenda this morning, Community Services. And under the heading of Partnerships and Grants Update 2024, I will hand it over to staff for a presentation.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Sarah Morris. My pronouns are she/her and I am the manager of Arts and Culture here at the district. I'm joined today by Devon Guest, who is the Acting Director of Recreation and Culture, and Bill Stoner, who is the GM of Community Services. So the objective of today's presentation is to get council's endorsement on the process and scope for review and update of the community partnership and the community grants program and policy. And those policies both live under the Community Services broader department. And before we get going today, I'm just going to go through an overview of what we'll be discussing. So the background on this policy update, policy comparison between the grants and the partnership policy, some opportunities for both of the policy that have been realized by staff and council, as well as, as some desired outcomes with the process and timeline, and finally a recommendation. So the background of this policy update is that council endorsed the district's new strategic plan in 2023. And a core objective of that plan is to build resilient people and partnerships. And so both of these policies seek to do that in different ways. The district already has a number of community partnerships in place with various organizations. And of course, these partnerships are invaluable to the community. However, there's a lack of clarity for staff, the community and for council in how to process and fund any new community partnerships proposals that come forward. In addition, there's often confusion between the community grants and the community partnership policies. So with the community grant agreements with the community grant organizations coming up for renewal in 2024, and that presented an opportunity to have a look at that program, update the policy in alignment with the community partnership policy update. And the project will seek to establish an effective process that gives council and the community the transparency it needs to implement the strategic plan by leveraging new partnership agreements and by providing grants effectively. So this slide provides an overview of the policies in question and the table has also been provided in council's report on the agenda today. So I'll just quickly summarize some differences between the two policies. The purposes of the community partnership policy is to facilitate collaboration between third parties and the District of Squamish in order to provide services that are beneficial and to fill any service gaps. The agreements are usually multiple years of length and at a higher value. And there is no funding mechanism established in this policy. And so various funding approaches, approaches have been taken over the years to fulfill community partnerships. The purpose of the community grant policy is to provide annual granting programs. They're usually small value grants and they're distributed through the community grant organizations. There is a funding mechanism established in this policy and it's 1% of the previous year's taxation. And the program is very successful and often oversubscribed. So opportunities for both of these policy updates for community partnerships, there's an opportunity to establish a proposal, some proposal requirements, the submission requirements and a review process. We also want to establish how these partnership requests are funded. So there's clarity for both public, staff and council and to differentiate between partnerships and grants and how both of those policies are funded. And then for the community grants, there's an opportunity to provide clarity around allocations to embed some incremental increases in the agreements so that when taxation rises, the agreements also carry along with those increases. And we're using the full budget every year and to provide clarity around in-kind requests and how the community grant organizations and the district should go about processing those. So the process and timeline for this project, we've already begun. We had budget approval in December and now we are looking for council's endorsement of the outline prior to going out for requests for proposals to hire a consultant to carry out the project. to hire a consultant to carry out the project. Um, we'll move into community engagement in March, and we'll hope to, in the first phase of community engagement, identify, uh, what the true opportunities are, what barriers the community are facing, and also what our staff are facing, um, with this, with these two policies. Um, and so that will be the first round of community engagement. We'll be looking to use, um, outreach models such as one-on-one interviews, group workshops and surveys. And then we'll move into some research and development. And the research and development will hope to, um, establish some potential, uh, policy recommendations, which will then be, uh, brought back out to community engagement where, um, they will get some feedback on those outcomes, um, on those recommendations, excuse me. And both phases of community engagement will involve both external parties. And these will include individuals, businesses and nonprofits who currently have agreements with the district or who have expressed interest in partnering with the district. Um, and as part of the engagement, there will be staff-specific workshops as it's important that the process works both internally and externally. Um, and that the solutions are practical and user-friendly for both staff and the community. So, once we, um, go through the final stage of community engagement, um, that will inform the first draft of the policy and the recommendations, which will be presented to council in June 2024. And it's the intent of staff to complete this policy review in line with the, uh, 2025 financial planning process. And so any budget updates can be included in 2025 and beyond in the five-year financial plan. Um, and then following, um, council's endorsement of the pol- policy recommendations, uh, communications plan will come into play whereby staff communicate with the public, um, and internally on the new policy and processes. And then that communications plan will continue, um, through into operations. And so the outcomes that we're looking to achieve, um, through this policy review are clarity around the different types of district funding available and how it's used, a process for accessing, uh, funding and the proposal submission requirements, transparency around evaluation of proposals and funding allocations, and enhanced fiscal responsibility, um, with a new submission and evaluation requirements that will assist council in making informed and responsible decisions in the budget process. And so with this recommendation presented in your report, um, staff will begin working on updating the policies that will work towards the district's strategic objective of resilient people and partnerships. Thank you. That's everything.
Thanks for the presentation. Council, any questions? Councillor Hamilton?
Thanks very much. I think this is a really important part, uh, of a way that, of, uh, of our community planning and ways that we can really integrate our community into our, our local government and our, uh, and having our, you know, having our community help our community. When we, um, when we decide, so I'm, I'm thinking about, uh, so right now, we're at the stage of approving the process to make the decision. Yeah? Um, and in this process, uh, staff have recommended that we hire a consultant to, um, hash out the, the details here. What's the process by which staff goes and looks at whether we should outsource the work to a consultant or whether we should be doing the work in-house, the, the policy development work in-house? And why did we land on a consultant in this case?
Thank you for your question through, through the chair. Um, in this case, we looked at staff capacity, um, and skill sets. And, um, in order to complete this work, we decided that the best, uh, mechanism would be to hire a consultant just due to, um, onboarding and training and the time that that would take to backfill a role in order to free up somebody to go and undertake this project. Uh, the project will be obviously, um, supervised or, um, administered by staff through the consultant. And so there will be staff, um, guidance, um, in the process.
Mayor Hurford, followed by Councillor Penningill.
Thank you. Um, exciting to see this, this come forward and, um, this is a key piece of our strategic plan. And I think, um, uh, this area of work can really, um, amplify the, the impact that we can have on, on the community. Um, I'm curious around the, um, partnership policy work. Um, we do have some existing partnerships and the, the staff report spoke about really was looking at, in my opinion, sort of clean slate. But we know that it's a little bit more complex than that with some existing ones. I just wondered how you expect the output of this work to sort of feed into those existing partnerships and subsequent, you know, um, would they go into this, the, like a unified process? You, you think, like, how is that part being thought of? I didn't, it didn't quite jump out at me in the, in the staff report that that was a consideration.
Thank you. Um, through the chair. It's not the intent of this process to clean slate, I would say. It's more the intent of this process to have a fair process established for new proposals. So, um, right now, we don't have an intake process. And it's of course important to recognize that there are existing partnership agreements, um, fulfilling those service gaps and that the district has. And so I think when we're looking at those opportunities, we want to make sure that they're available to other community groups that maybe aren't known, um, by staff or by council, and to provide them with the same opportunity that was afforded to these other groups that maybe came through a different process initially in the past.
Okay, so, yeah, thank you for, for that. That ma- that makes sense. I'm just, I'm wondering about, and I don't have a particular agreement in, in mind or anything, but just if some of those agreements should evolve in a direction over time based on the output of this work, um, I'd just like that to be a, um, to be, make sure that's part of the scope, scope of work when we, um, when this comes, when this comes back to us.
Councillor Penningill, followed by Councillor Stoner.
Yeah, thanks. And, and this question might, I mean, staff may have some thoughts about this, but maybe this is more for my colleagues. And I guess, when I was looking at this, I was wondering a little bit if, if there needs to be a bit more council direction upfront and in particular about what we're trying to achieve with these sort of two categories we've, we have of the community enhancement grants and the partnership agreements. And, and I guess, um, cause then that sort of would drive, you know, how should we fund these things? And what are we trying to, you know, what policy should be around it? And I guess in my mind, um, and I guess maybe it's a check if, if other people have the same perspective, or maybe I'm missing something. But community enhancement grants, I tend to think of, those are things where we are really empowering the community to decide what it needs and to provide funding to, to, you know, have that, to do what it needs to, to, um, to build community itself. And there, you know, there are a few parameters around that and reconciliation environment, a few things we wanna care about, but in general, it's, it's really about empowering the community. Whereas partnership agreements, in my mind, I think in our strategic planning, we sort of said, we actually believe there's significant value in, in involving the community more in some of the services we provide. But I still think of the partnership agreement sort of things as, uh, similar to what might come in our budget. Like, we need to redo the, the bathroom at Stansted, Stan Clark Park. And so there would be, um, or sorry, uh, it's not the park, Junction Park, thank you. Um, and, and so there'd be a budget item. It's just that instead of, uh, staff doing a lot of the work, it might be a community group doing it. And so it's more driven by, you know, when staff does the assessment of, of looking at the strategic plan and the real sort of bigger community needs, uh, what are the things we'd put in the budget? But we actually want, uh, we want to delegate this out to a community group as opposed to, uh, a community group comes to us as, with this sort of blue sky idea, and it's sort of really outside of our strategic plan. And they just want a large amount of funding. And maybe it sounds sort of great, but it's sort of outside of the plan. And so, uh, you know, maybe I'm out to lunch on that and other people have a different perspective, but that's sort of how I've been thinking about these two things. And so I would sort of expect that the, the updates and so on would, would come at it in that way. But I feel like we're shifting more towards the, the, um, partnership policy of that is, again, a community group has a great idea, but it's a bigger idea and they come with this big ass and it's really a little bit outside of our strategic plan, maybe. And so I'm just wondering if, if that needs some thought or discussion.
Thank you through the chair. We definitely are looking for a process in order to evaluate those bigger proposals and come through the district. And right now, we don't have the authority at staff level to make those decisions. Um, the, the current partnership policy specifies that council, um, will be the ultimate decider of partnerships. And so that's where we're seeing these proposals coming to the council table. And so we are looking at a process whereby staff can work with a framework to evaluate these unsolicited requests. We are also looking at how, um, staff can partner with the community to deliver, you know, infrastructure projects or fill service gaps too. And so the policy will kind of be twofold in, um, addressing those unsolicited requests and then also looking for the best value, um, proponent and, and other ways to partner with the community to deliver those, um, those needs.
Councillor Stoner?
Thank you through the chair. Uh, a few questions. Um, on the timeline, um, I appreciate it's already tight. As I look at the chart in the staff report, many of these agreements come to an end in 2024. So I'm just wondering what communication we have with the existing, uh, folks that we have partnership agreements with and what those conversations look like as we go through this process and in time for the 2025 budget.
Thank you through the chair. Um, there are a number of agreements that, um, are in existence already. Um, the, the agreements that come to, uh, that are up for renewal in 2024, um, have been, you know, budgeted for through the grant agreements. And so it's likely that those agreements with the community grant organizations specifically will continue to be funded. It's just looking at those programs and maybe, um, the policy amendments there. Um, with the other agreements, um, we don't know what the funding mechanism will be. Um, although it's not the intention to let them lapse. Um, and so the policy recommendations will, will take that into consideration and that will be an outcome is that obviously that these, um, these agreements need to be funded moving forward. Um, the R Squamish, um, one-year agreement has been, um, already budgeted for in plannings as, planning's budget as a placeholder. Um, we're not sure whether the agreement with the BIA should be a grant or should be a partnership. Um, and same goes for Sorka. And so that this whole review is going to take into account those agreements and maybe where they should fall.
Okay, that's helpful. And I'm just wondering if you can piece apart a little bit more our approach on the various funding sources. You touched on it a little bit. And I feel like I've heard mixed things over the years. So like the Sorka partnership agreement, for example, I've heard that, that, uh, that portion of that money comes out of the 1% that we typically allocate to otherwise the grant component. Is that correct?
Yes. Um, so through the chair, you'll see in councils, um, in the report presented in the agenda today, the breakdown of that 1% is included. I have got it on a slide if we want to pop it up. Um, but, um, yes, so what happened is previously council decided on the grants. Um, and it was longstanding that Sorka had received grant funding on multiple, um, year agreements through council's granting process. And so when the framework was changed, that carried through and that remains to be funded by the grants, um, 1% today. And so, um, it will be determined whether or not that's appropriate as we move forward.
Okay, that's great that that conversation is going to happen. Um, that also touches on my other question, which is, um, the table that is in the staff report, um, is just the breakdown of the grant budget. It's not all of the partnership agreements that we currently have, correct?
That's correct.
So will that be coming forward in terms of an inventory of all the various agreements as part of this process? I think that's one of the things that I'm often challenged with. And we talk about equitable support across different types of organizations in our communities. I just want to make sure that'll be included in this project.
Thank you through the chair. Um, we are looking to do an inventory of all existing partnership agreements within the district as part of this process. Um, in addition to looking at the permission, permissive tax exemptions and whether or not, um, grants and partnerships, um, and permissive tax exemptions should be provided to the same organizations and, and the fairness, um, in that.
Wonderful. And then one last quick question. In that same table, the Sorka agreement is, the agreement type is actually a service agreement, not a partnership agreement. I'm just wondering if there's actual differentiation there. Um, and if so, what that is.
Thank you through the chair. Um, I think that was actually a typo. It is a grant agreement, um, but it's not a community grant agreement. So, um, Sorka's funding is a grant given by the district to Sorka. However, they do not run a community grant program.
Councillor Hamilton?
Thanks very much. Uh, councillor Stoner touched on something that I, um, was one of the, one of the reasons why I think this is an important part of our strategic plan. Um, and one of the things that I've struggled to understand in my, my first year here, uh, on council is how much do we contribute to each different community group or, and when I say community group, I don't mean a structured organization. I might mean, you know, Sorka is a structured organization which focuses on it. Cycling, we might have trail walkers, we have climbers, we have windsports, we have lots of different recreation. That's just within the recreation sphere. And you spoke to doing an inventory as part of this process. Um, I see that as a one-time snapshot, which is important. Um, but I see a, an important piece of this RFP is having some kind of mechanism for us moving forward for council and the community to have a broad view of the various ways we support different organizations. So that is a complicated question because we have permissive tax exemptions, we have long-term land leases, we have grants. We have so many different ways to support our community groups. And in order to understand, well, how much do we support, um, that's just mountain biking versus climbing, you have to dig into so many different layers. Yeah? So if there could be a process to find a way to communicate that in the RFP, that would be.
Ms. Glenda?
Thank you very much through the chair. Um, it's definitely a valuable question and I can understand why council would want that information. In terms of this particular project around partnership agreements and grants, it's beyond the scope of what staff have contemplated for this timeline. Um, so it could be something on deck for, for future work.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
As a follow-up, where would that, where would you envision that future work, um, sitting? Is it sitting within finance or is it sitting within, where does it sit with, where might it sit within staff responsibility? That's, because it's so broad, I'm struggling to see where it would fit.
Um, yeah, I could, I prefer to think about that. Um, without knowing the scope of that work, I wouldn't want a motion on the fly. Um, and we are bringing strategic planning back. So we'd have to look at, you know, where it would fit in, in the remaining tactics for the balance of the term, but we can turn our heads to that as we're preparing for strategic planning.
Very good. Thank you. Councillor Greenlaw?
This, uh, yeah, I, I'm a strong proponent of community engagement. I think it's an important foundation upon which community health and connection is built. And so I'm very much in, in favor of both of these programs. I think they're really, really vitally important to our community right now, especially. Um, and I, I was wondering if you could just give some examples, just hypothetical projects that may be eligible, for instance, for the community grants.
Thank you. Um, so the community grants through the chair, the community grants are distributed by our, um, two community grant organizations. And so they vary from initiatives that may be, um, you know, art programming to, um, hospice, the Hospice Society running some programming up there, um, various community projects. And actually, the community grant organizations are coming forward in, uh, February to provide a report to council on all of the projects that they have funded in 2023 and how the programs have gone. So they're, they'll be coming to council shortly. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. And I was also just wondering, um, where will members of the public be able to access the information of like, would my project be, you know, are the grants available for my project and stuff like that? Or is that kind of just further down the line and?
Thank you through the chair. So there are community enhancement grant programs run by the Community Foundation and also Squamish Arts. And so both of those programs are annual programs and there's information available year round on their websites. They just concluded and they're they will be cutting the checks for the 2024 projects this month. And so for 2024, the grant funding has been dispersed. They do open up back again in November, and so that will be available again in 2025 for the community.
Okay, thank you.
Council, any other questions? The Counselor Hamilton, go ahead.
Well, if it's known at this time, do you have an idea of the cost of a consultant to do this? I understand if that's dependent on the details of the RFP, which it certainly might be. Just for us to have an understanding of what sort of budget we are talking about.
Thank you for the question through the chair. Through the RFP, that will obviously get determined. I think with staff come to the table on this with a certain level of expertise. The support we're looking to fulfill this is really in evolving into a more robust and transparent community partnership and granting process. So we see the individual or the organization having strong ties to policy development and evolution. The cost of that, we will see within the budget as approved by council.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Hamilton. Anything else, counsel? Are we moving on to the to recommendation? A motion? We have a staff recommendation that's moved by Counselor Stoner, seconded by Counselor Hamilton. Counselor Stoner.
Yeah, just briefly, thanks for bringing the scope of this work forward. As previously mentioned, this is a core part of our strategic plan. And I think will be a really important piece of work to add clarity to council's decision making, to staff's process. And most importantly, to our community to understand what the various processes are for engaging and working with the district. I don't think it's going to be easy, which I think why the scoping exercise has been really helpful for us to understand where the limitations are going to be. And hopefully, we can find a really fantastic consultant to help us walk through it, holding our hands. Not that I don't trust staff couldn't do it, but I just think you need some extra capacity to get across the line on the timeline that you presented, which is quite tight. Thank you.
Counselor Hamilton.
Yeah, thanks very much for bringing this really important work forward. I think that this is an example where the the timeline. It's great that I think we're pushing the timeline fast because I think this is something when we get a consultant, when we get focused on this, we can make the decision and and move forward with a clearer, more transparent, more. And when I say transparent, I don't mean that things are hiding. I mean transparent as in people know what's happening, what's available and where are where are tax dollars being spent more broadly than just exactly which how many dollars are going in a grant line item. So thank you very much for the work to to support this. And I really look forward to both the outcome of this policy review and the future hopeful extension in the scope of a plan for us to see broadly how our money is being spent. Thanks.
Mayor Herford.
Yeah, I'm happy to support this. I think this is a very important step forward. I think I do think the timeline is ambitious and I appreciate that as sometimes, you know, a delay of a month means a delay of a year in our in processes, just the way it goes. So I'm I'm happy to support this moving at the at the pace presented so that the outcome of this work can be as fulsomely integrated as possible into financial planning going forward. And of course, that means that means hopefully some newer and renewed agreements in these in these areas. So I know that this is a lot of work to to arrive at some recommendations that will also unlock another round of a lot of a lot of work. But I think there's a tremendous opportunity here. So I think I think it's a worth very much a worthwhile endeavor. I look forward to the outcome of that work. Thank you.
Counselor Penningill.
Yeah, thanks for bringing this forward. Happy to support. It's really good to have clear policy around the decisions we're making. So I'm glad to be refining and adding that clarity and appreciate the clarification to the the question I had. It makes it it makes a bit more sense to me now. And I will also say I really preferred being able to delegate larger funds to Squash Community Foundation, Squamish Arts, and have them sort of sift through the the community grants. And so I hope that will stay part of the process. I think sort of empowering that part of the community to do that work has been good all around from my perspective. So I hope that that stays and we will see. Thank you.
And if there are no other comments, I'll call the question. All those in favor. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you very much. And we'll take five minutes so that we can reset for our next delegation. Thank you and welcome back. Our next presentation is the fourth quarter 2023 Real Estate and Facilities Master Plan and General Projects Update. Staff, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Cal Bragg. I'm the Director of Facilities Planning and Construction at the District. And as noted, this is a report towards the end of last year. It's the final report for the year. Normally, we do this in December at the end of the year, but we had a lot of focus on Brennan Park and Public Works and we focused on that and we're reporting now. As noted, this is all the projects is under the Real Estate Facilities Master Plan and also some additional projects that we're doing beyond the platform. This includes the Fire Hall Number Two, Public Works Facility, Brennan Park Recreation Center, also some Fields and Lands work, the Civic Block or the Civic Hub, Covered Structures, Valley Cliff Childcare Center. Also includes Squamish Adventure Center and Junction Park Washrooms. So File Hall Number Two currently is under construction. We're roughly 80% through, give or take. Maybe 75% at towards the end of last year. Is a $15.8 million project. We're aiming to complete before June this year. We're on time, we're on budget. The current works is a sort of electrical and mechanical, and this is fit out and rough in. There's certain parts of the the building that have been accelerated compared to other ones. The roof is complete last year, which was great. That was before winter was set in. It was a big milestone and that allows the team to then focus on the interiors to make sure they're on time. The exterior insulation is going up, rear walls, the landscaping at the rear is going in as well. The fittings, furniture and equipment has also been ordered. That's the office furniture, for example. Drywall is going in, interior paint was going in then as well, and flooring had started as well. So the next steps, the bay doors are coming in about three weeks here. The exterior exterior metal facade is going in and the landscaping will be continuing. Then they're continuing the the fit out and the furnishing. One of the main items that we've had, there's a couple of one hurdle was material delays. We're seeing some extensions from COVID-19. You know, last month it was switch gear. This time it's some heat pump supply delays. So we're having to do some juggling and working around there. It's not going to delay the project at this stage, but it's creating some headache. Some notable features of this project is it is net zero. It's the greenest building that Squamish has done built so far. It's the top of the step codes anymore and it would be energy producing. The roof is full of solar panels. We're targeting right now for a plus 90% landfill waste reduction, which is great. Our minimum target there for this project was 85%. And there's also a grant at the moment that's moving through the process. It's an FCM grant and that's over a million dollars. And it also gives us a cheaper interest on the on the loan for the project. The Public Works Facility, this one, we've readjusted the timeline. The budget's set in place at $37 million and the new timeline we're on at the moment, it's going well. The current works towards the end of last year was prepping for preload and this is oil soils work. Includes work for the flood construction level and also some cell contamination work onsite. The building was redesigned as well at approximately 45% of the drawings. The focus there was the maintenance bays remain basically the same. It was a complete redesign of the office interior and this was to reduce some square footage there to get the cost down. The yard redesign is about 45%. The reason this was done was to increase the platform and to bring it up to flood construction level. And there's also, you know, a lot of items that follow on from that. We have to rework utilities. You need to get the walls engineered, which has taken a little bit of effort here. Impact on wastewater treatment plant and also impact on operations there was a new ramp that's been added. So all that's been worked through. And then also an updating of the northern spear area, which is a streamside protection environmental area. And there is a it's an incentive area. We're just making sure that the project team do the right thing and keep everything above board here as far as protections go. On the sustainability level, this one is a step code two, and that will change over the next two to three weeks. We're getting an update from the project team. On the future expansion here, there is an allowance for a third floor office build out in the future of about 5,000 square feet. The yard can be expanded by reduce or moving a salt shed off site to allow some additional square footage for operations. The maintenance bays there can be expanded as well, possibly a half bay, possibly a full bay. We're still working through that. And that's towards the the west side and that's a future build out. And in this particular project, parking has not been a hurdle to jump through. We've got ample space at the moment. So the next steps is continue with earthworks, continue through detailed design. And then we're getting a midpoint class C checkpoint. The staff are anticipating coming back to class to council with a class A in Q2 before we sign final contracts with the builder to move forward for actual construction of the building. So Brennan Park, the first work here to report on is the phase one, which is the GICB grant. The GICB stands for Green Inclusive Communities Building Program. This project's an IPD project and that's an integrated project delivery. And it's a contractual system where we engage the proponents onsite, which is the builder and the architect. Construction is due to start in Q2. We're just working out some final dates here. And the current works are designers is working through. They're about maybe 30% through design at an estimate. There's some early renderings that you can see there and that's just to help guide some direction for for aesthetics. The main IPD contract is under negotiation and also the contract with the grant supplier is under negotiation. And also there has been department engagement throughout the district and working through the build code and alignment. And what we're trying to do is making sure that, you know, it's an existing old building and making sure it's been brought up to current codes. The next steps are to finalize the the contracts and head into community engagement and doing the prep for that. The hurdles that the project team has had is just making sure we align the actual scope with the budget and that's tracking well. At this stage, the whole project is tracking on time and on budget. The next stage for Brennan Park is the ICIP or ISIP grant. This is known as the Clean BC Communities Fund. Staff have changed the name to ISIP. Moving forward with this one, we're 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 sitting and waiting at the moment for confirmation, or it may not be confirmed for the for the grant process, but it has been moving through the system here. The actual work that ISIP focuses on is 100% sustainability focused and its scope will include retrofitting part of the existing exterior walls. And this is to focus and reduce the energy costs and the GHG's or the greenhouse gas emissions of Brennan Park. Some of the works on the lands at the moment, the splash pad and playground is just in at that that stage, we're going through an RFP for the new design proponent. It's on time. Sorry, it's it's off time, but it's on budget. We'll be coming back with an update of timing here. We're looking to finish construction in 2024. We don't have quite a date at the moment. We're going through with the the builder and the designer at the moment. The budget for this one's $1.8 million. The trail between Brennan Park Recreation Center and Finch is slated for this year and that's in discussion at the moment for time and budget. And then the Covered Bike Park, this work has been pushed through to the proponent and the onus is on them to come back and update us. The overall predevelopment work at Brennan Park. And what the predevelopment work is, is where the architects are reviewing the prior studies, including the field and fields and land master plan, feasibility studies from back in 2018, also reviewing public engagement and previous architects layouts. And then also talking with the planning departments internally at the district. And what they're doing is they're just making sure that the retro on the sorry, the the staging that we're working on with Brennan Park that it fits within the existing building. And this is to make sure that it, you know, the the stages don't look like an add on or they don't look like piecemeal. And they're creating an overall process and that just makes sure it's lining up the first grant with the second grant, the pool, with the ice rink and the splash park and how everything fits together. It's also allowing the groundwork for grant two works as to what goes when and how it fits in with the first grant if we do get the grant work. And also sets the stage for the next round of retrofit works and making sure that the overall work that we're doing fits in with C cap goals for 2030 and making sure that sustainability levels are at a level that's feasible but also attainable. The other focus with the predevelopment works does is coordinating the exterior works, which is the splash pad. And then how that works with the entry of the building, how it works with human traffic movement and then parking area as well. The report for this one's due in June this year. The budget's $300,000. And as noted, we're looking at overall preliminary master planning concepts, which is actual predevelopment work. So the next stage in this one is So the next stage in this one is looking at the locations and diving into the ice rink and the pool, looking at the size of them, looking at the cost of them, and looking at what impact it has within the centre, looking at where their positions are compared to, say, mechanical rooms and creating an overall feasible plan for Brennan Park. And so far, we've had no hurdles. For the Civic Block or the Civic Hub, this is with consultants currently. It's on time. There's an update due in February. The budget for this work, and that includes industrial park consultant work, is combined is four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The current work is, they're about fifty percent through their reporting, and the next step is to present to council in February. So Covered Structures, this one is at the Farmers Market, which is downtown on Cleveland Avenue. This one is on time. Construction's looking at around March. The budget's ninety-eight thousand dollars. The current workers, the contractor is engaged, and they're going through finer design details and working out what additional accessible items we can add to the project. So the next stage is attaining building approval and starting construction. Valley Cliff Childcare, the timeline has been readjusted after last year's delay. That was due to some archaeological hurdles. The timeline was starting in Q1, which is in a few months here. The budget's three million dollars, and the works that are currently happening, or towards the end of January, tree removal is going to start. Civic Works is under preparation, hasn't started onsite, but they're preparing, and then also the building permit. The next steps here is to finalize the trade tender packages with the builder, site mobilization and get construction started. This one's been a bit tough. One of the hurdles we've had again is construction costs. It's a common theme through our projects. We're making sure that our scope of work is in line with budgets and costs here, which it is. The Squamish Adventure Centre, this job is, the construction site is complete. We're waiting on Squamish Story, which is the digital and the aesthetics and the artistic side to be implemented, and that's coming, or the install is targeted for April. There's also another grant that's in process on that one. We'll come back on Q1, two thousand and twenty-four to update how that one's going. The Junction Park Washrooms, we've moved this one because we've had alignment difficulties with the budget. We had some over budget items last year when we went out to market. We reviewed and changed the scope of work, and we've updated the drawings. We've got a new RFP underway. We're changing the system slightly. We're getting a design and construct general contractor in that one, and right now it's under RFP. The next stage is here to engage the contractor and start the work. Just an overview on grant funding. There's four grants here. The two that have been approved, as noted, is the first one is the GICB one for sixteen point three million Brennan Park. The covered structure, which we're moving forward with, and the two that we're still waiting for final confirmation is a yes or a no, is the ISIP for fourteen million dollars for Brennan Park, and then also the FCM grant for Fire Hall Number Two. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Counsel, questions? If any. Counselor Pennington.
Just on Public Works, you mentioned the ability to add a third floor. Are we limited to one floor in the future? Or can it handle more floors if we so choose sometime in the future?
Through the chair, yes, it can handle more, but there is a significant cost at that, and it's almost at economies of scale. You're doing one floor, the weight on the building, it's a pre-engineered steel building. So one floor is not too bad, but when we're going for another floor and adding that extra weight, it's an exponential cost increase there. So that means even bulkier footings and bulkier posts and beams and a bulkier structure. So it's possible, but it's based on cost, which is fairly significant.
So to follow up then, if we were sort of set on having that flexibility in the future, we'd have to make that investment now, and we'd see that that thirty-seven million dollar number climb a fair bit higher.
Through the chair, correct.
Counselor Stoner.
Thank you through the chair. A few questions. My first one is on the scope of, maybe a bit of a plug, and a question on the scope of the proposed community engagement around the Brennan Park project that's scheduled for February first from four to eight. If you can speak to that a little bit or give a little bit of insight as to what the community can expect on level of engagement, given kind of the constraints that we're under for the grants that we're building.
Through the chair, this is the first update to the community as a general about the works that are going on in Brennan Park. And one of the main items that we wanted to make sure is the information coming across as to, you know, why is the ice rink not going? Why is the pool not going? And why is the project that we've got is the scope of work as it is right now? And just for note, that scope of work is the new customer service area. There's a retrofit to the lobby. There's a retrofit of the existing mezzanine area, which is above the ice rink, just to turn it into programming space. There's a new elevator going in to access that area. There is an upgrade of the existing ice rink change rooms and some additional insulation and work to reduce the GHGs. And the reason that this work is focused solely on that is because the grants, when we apply for them, are very strict in their scope of work. We haven't found a grant, unfortunately, that allows for an ice rink. We haven't found a grant, unfortunately, that allows for a pool. We're very open to that, and we're focused on that. But if there's funding available to retrofit and upgrade Brennan Park, we're making sure that it does fit with the RAFMP, and the alignment worked out quite well. But unfortunately, in this instance, we didn't find the pool ice rink one.
Yeah, that's totally fair and appreciate the proactive approach to engagement with the community on this one before construction begins. I guess my other question is, so does this more land in kind of a level of inform to, we're trying to communicate out to the community, what is happening, or are there elements that we're seeking community feedback on?
Through the chair, it's a little bit of both. You know, community feedback is paramount and creating a very good product. So if the community provides input, then we have a road that we need to fit in with the grant scope of work, but we can change slightly within there. So yeah, the community feedback is very important.
Okay, that's great. My second question was going to be around the Splash Park, because I suspect that that will also come up in community engagement. I'm just curious with the timing of the master planning for the site at Brennan Park. You said that's not done until June of twenty twenty-four. Does that prohibit us from moving forward on the Splash Park location and build? Like, do those two have to dovetail?
Through the chair, no, the Splash Park is one part of the large jigsaw piece. And the project team that's on Brennan Park right now is talking to the Splash Park project team as well. So that'll be resolved for the overall master planning. We know roughly where the spot can go for the splash pad, which fits within the master planning. That's the short term, medium term, and long term, long term plan. As long as it fits within that area, it'll adhere to the rest of the products and projects that are going on there.
Okay, and then in the staff report, it says that the Splash Park is a little bit delayed because we increased the scope to include the North Yards Playground. I'm just wondering if you can speak to why that decision was made to bundle those.
Through the chair, where we can find economies of scale within our projects, because we have many projects going on as one. We try and have a single consultant branch across a few projects if we can. It just creates a cheaper design costs for the projects as a whole and allows us to create economies of scale. So the delay here was an offset for a cheaper product.
Okay, and then one last question around the covered structure downtown. One, I just want to make sure that it will be movable to some degree. I know that they aren't always, but if there's, and then also the exact location. So is it going in the parking lot? And if so, how many stalls are we losing?
Through the chair, it's a wood structure that's bolted down to concrete, so the concrete platform is difficult to move, but it's relatively straightforward to unbolt it from its footing. So if we decide in three or four years' time to pick it up and say, move it to a park, it's relatively straightforward to do. As far as the impact on the parking, we're losing between three to five spaces. And we're readjusting possibly the shape of the parking lot as well to see if we can gain some of that back. We're adding in some bicycle spaces and some motorbike spaces as well. So that's again, it's a push and shove here for this particular covered structure. The location is going on the, and I should have actually put a map on here, my apologies. It's going against Cleveland Avenue on the west side of the parking lot, in the centre of the parking lot. So it's moved over in the parking lot as far west as possible against Cleveland there, against the footpath.
And can you just speak to why that specific location was chosen, like just in terms of the Farmers Market area? It's only used as a Farmers Market for a portion of the year. There's another covered structure in Junction Park right next door, so I'm just curious why that particular location was chosen.
We talked to community groups and had input on where they believe was the best spot for it, including the Farmers Market. And as you know, this is used for a small portion of the time for the Farmers Market. But when we look at the existing covered structure that we've got on the northern side of Cleveland Avenue, that works very well as far as sun, wind, rain and protection, and the actual use was quite high. This one's similar when it's not being used for the Farmers Market. It'll be used in the same sort of way that the north side one is used. So the feedback was to get it as close to the footpath as possible, so we can get access to the general public from the footpath when the Farmers Markets aren't being used.
I'd like to just carry on with the structure, because I have a question here. What's the expected lifespan of those structures?
Through the chair, it's a really good question. That would come down to maintenance. This is a steel roof, so that will degrade over time, and they usually have at least ten years on those ones. You know, it's a wood structure. The maintenance that we've programmed in there, it's a very simple painted finish or a stained finish. So these things, if they're maintained, would have at least twenty to thirty years on them if they're maintained properly, at a very rough guess.
And possibly even a longer lifespan with good, solid, tender, loving care?
Correct. They should last much longer. I was being slightly conservative, but yeah, if they're maintained, it's, yeah, it's a structure.
Counselor Anderson, welcome and thanks for joining us.
Thank you. I, partly this was perhaps already addressed in connection with Counselor Stoner's question, but I wonder about the type of public input or community and user group input you'll be engaged in. What I have in mind is there's a particular group making use of Brennan Park right now, one of the rooms. I think it's Black Tusk, and that's Between Ships Theatre. And they've been pressed to find such space for a long time, and they're interested perhaps in making additional types of uses. I wonder whether, my question is whether you'll be directly soliciting input from such user groups as the clientele you have at Brennan Park today, including Between Ships Theatre.
Through the chair, the short answer is yes. We're targeting certain user groups. That particular user group needs further attention from staff to make sure we get further detail to inject into the product here. We do have some overall allowances, and we have targeted certain user groups, such as the ice users, to get down to specific detail on the ice rink change rooms, like literally to getting down to, you know, walking through where the, say, rope hooks and hooks for the hockey sticks go. So we're working through that, the art side as well, but the ice rink users aside, it's been the main focus because that's the first of the projects here that's being launched. We're doing a four-phase approach with this twenty point five million dollar project for Phase One. And the first, one of the first projects is to get the ice rink change rooms complete, so we'll be, we're working through the process and coming to them.
Thank you. Last time we discussed, in earlier time, we discussed this report, and I'm going to quote from it. Next step under master planning, building and lands, pre-development works is review satellite recreation scope of work. So last time we discussed that element, it was in connection with complementing a proposed Parks and Recreation Master Plan update. Could you update us as to the, your intent and the scope of work, if you like, for this reviewing of satellite recreation opportunities? Because the landscape has changed. We won't be undertaking that plan in the next year. So what will be, what is the ambition level as regards putting together a map of needs and opportunities for satellite recreation facilities, if you may be able to elaborate on that?
Through the chair, that's a good question. Regardless of updating the other master plans here, the satellite recreation work is looking at what is the demand and what is the capability for Brennan Park right now? And then looking at five to ten, fifteen, twenty years down the track to have some shortlisted areas to determine if we need to create a spillover area. For example, if we need a larger wellness centre that can't handle the capacity at Brennan Park right now, and we're looking at parking spaces and seeing how that fits together, it's almost like making sure that we have space beyond Brennan Park for recreation as Squamish population grows. But now we're targeting the, or the architects right now are targeting this from their standpoint. So what they're looking at now is a maximum and highest and best use for Brennan Park. And if they determine that we do need, you know, beyond or a spillover from that, that's where the satellite recreation work comes into.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Counselor Anderson. Counsel, any other questions? I have a few of my own. I'm not clear about the washrooms at Junction Park, their current status. Are those washrooms open at this point?
Through the chair, that's a good question. I believe they are open, but they do get shut a lot through vandalism and cleaning and just not a product that's easy to maintain.
Okay, and in going through the report in our package, there was a large attachment that we have seen previously. I started down the road of trying to figure out if it was an update or the same, and I got sidetracked. So is that the same report, or has it been updated since we saw it last?
Through the chair, that's exactly the same report. The amount of work that was done at that time was extensive. The actual building plans, the update is coming in about three to four weeks to update that particular validation report.
Okay, great. Those were all the questions I had. Any others, Counsel? Wow, we are so ahead of time. I've had a schedule. Oh, okay. Counselor Stoner is going to move receipt, and that's seconded by Counselor Hamilton. All those in favor? Oh, yes, sorry, Counselor Anderson. I did move rather quickly on that. Go ahead with comments.
I'll start with the section, I believe it's two H in the Brennan Park package, and this concerns art, culture and heritage. A few points. First of all, that we keep in mind that it is only showcasing that's emphasized. We are still needing to address dedicated space one way and at some point or another. The Arts, the Arts Culture and Heritage Strategy six point three is being satisfied, addressed in the present initiative. However, we also have six point four and specific direction for the district that awaits future attention, and that is dead, targeting what type of spaces, physical spaces, not beyond showcasing. With respect to showcasing and exhibit space and the opportunities here, and it may already be on the staff's itinerary, but I suggest consulting Toby Jackson, coordinator at their foyer gallery, who has a number of times put together a summary of opportunities for future display space from an experienced and detailed perspective on infrastructure requirements, including electrical, which is of course important for many types of exhibits these days, including traveling exhibits, which Squamish does not have a space to host. And we have two examples touring the province right now, one on First Nations languages called Our Living Languages. Another one is on the Punjabi Canadian legacy, which is touring the province right now. And Squamish, in fact, does not have an exhibit space suitable to host these types of exhibits. They have insurance requirements, electrical requirements, practical requirements. And so I think that I suggest that Toby Jackson is a very good source of advice on her practical experience in this, and she could be contacted through the library. I also note in the, in the report on covered structure, the cost of ninety-eight thousand. Ten years ago exactly, the canoe shelter, the shelter on Fournier Park was built for one hundred thousand. Of course, it's been inflation since then, but it strikes me that's a pretty good price, ninety-eight thousand. And I'm hoping that in our tendering, we might consider there may be any number of suppliers for that timber frame structure. Excuse me. And finally, and I won't go into detail on this, but I have had the opportunity to dive into the section on the archaeological study for the Brennan Park things, Brennan Park piece of it. And I see really significant gaps here, and the gaps are a failure to identify five village sites in the vicinity. A former water course that was a major fishery. And all of these, and the reliance on air photo analysis rather than on maps and other information that's available. And my general conclusion is we can do a better job to offer visiting consultants and professionals doing archaeological studies with a little bit more access to local knowledge and resources, and that's just a general comment. And the library does have all this information, but And, um, that's just a general comment and, uh, the library does have all this information, but it was missed.
I'm just going to defer to, um, Ms. Glende.
Thank you through the chair. If council has any concerns with work that has been produced by staff or a consultant, I prefer it come to the C A O in a different mechanism rather than through a public meeting and we can address it that way. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, Counselor Anderson, that, uh, you're wrapped up. Thank you. Uh, so unless there are any other, um, comments, I will call the question. All those in favor? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you very much, um, Mr. Bragg and, uh, Mr. Stoner. Um, and, uh, with us well ahead of schedule, uh, we will break for lunch and I'll request that, uh, everybody be back and ready to go at one P M.